Happy. He likes whoever's going to start can introduce yourselves or however he'd like to proceed.
I'm Josie Ains, Chairperson of America Two Fifty Lebanon County.
Jennifer Cuso, Visit Lebanon Valley.
Jan Morrissey, Lebanon County Historical Society, and I guess in my labeled co-chair.
Yeah.
Oh, congratulations.
There you go.
I wasn't sure if that was my official title or not. Go ahead. Yes.
Tom Newmaster, Forrest PKG.
Welcome.
I might as well just kind of give you an idea of why I handed out these packets is to give you an idea of what we have, the information I have gotten and, and of course, going to the Region Three meeting. And if you look at page one, you'll see, and this is just gives you an idea, you know, what Region Three is, and you could see the different counties that we're included in. So that should give you an idea. It's pretty big. And we-
South Central Pennsylvania, though.
What's that?
Basically, South Central Pennsylvania.
Basically, that's what it is. Yeah, yeah. I kind of thought we would be thrown in with Lancaster, but we're not, so.
Yeah, they're usually part of that block.
Yeah, I, I, I think they're with West Chester and, you know, Chester County and that area, so. But anyway, so anyway, that just gives you an idea. I don't know when the next Region Three meeting is going to be because what they're doing is hitting all the regions right now. And I, I assume that I'll probably know in a month or so when our next meeting is going to be, where it's going to be held. This one was held near State College. So. Anyway. Um. Again, I'm kind of waiting for her to come, but this, you know, you have any questions about Region Three meeting?
Was it fruitful? Did you find?
Yeah, it was. Met a lot of different people from the different counties. It was interesting what they're going forward with. I felt like we were behind the gun, but Huntington County is just starting also. You know, so I didn't feel kind of way out left field, but then there's other people, other counties, like Dolphin County's been working on there since 2020. You know, so, but yeah, it was. It was very interesting and got a lot of information which I'll go try to go through quickly because I know you have another meeting afterwards. But one of the things that I'm learning is that they're all doing different projects or, and some of them, and I'm trying to think of who it was, it was Franklin, Huntington, Juniata. It's called the Juniata River Valley. A DMO, and they also are together with the chamber. And so there's about three or four of them that are grouped together instead of just being out on their own. So they're doing different things there. So, yeah, Cassandra Coleman led the meeting. She explained a lot of the different things that are happening, which I will go through soon as Julie gets back, and she's back. Okay. So, so we discussed that, and the next page, page two.
That was our handout.
Yeah, that was our handout, our last meeting that we had in April. So, but that gives you an idea of what they sent us. And of course, then we have the Lebanon County Commissioners what we, what we proposed to do in 2024. It's a timeline of 2025 and 2026. And, and this is just not set in stone. We're going to add to it, but this is basically what we came up with from our April meeting. The next one is a promotional video. I'll let Jen talk about this.
So I talked about last, last time we met with you that for the tourism bracket and from Visit Lebanon Valley, we plan to create Lebanon Valley Proud video, almost in the same vein that the state did the PA Proud, where we weren't mentioned.
I've seen that, and I don't think they've seen, seen that video.
Oh, I think-
Have you, or have-
Oh, yeah. Well, we showed it at the meeting and everyone was at our meeting. I don't know that Bob has seen it.
It's very well done.
It's very nice and-
Very long, though.
It's very long. It's seven minutes, so we don't want to do it that long. And clearly, you know, I put everything down. We may not get to everyone, so I don't want to promise that everyone's going to be in the video. But we're going to have to start consolidating our, our thoughts and who is the representative that's going to stand outside and say, you know, the important fact that we want to share about the Lebanon Valley. And these are things that we'll create this summer on our dime and be happy to, to have that to get people excited about the 2026 adventure. Do you?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Where is the list of events that you want to have? What does it look like?
It says Lebanon Valley Proud Video Highlights.
Oh, so there's no dates with it or anything?
Oh, no.
I still have to-
I thought you were talking about events that you sent.
No, no, no.
Oh, no.
I misunderstood.
That's okay. I'm thinking for the video, it'd be great to plan a day where maybe one day we do maybe four or five of and go to the Union Canal Tunnel and, you know, Cornwall Furnace and a rail trail. And then different, different highlights that we consider highlights in the Lebanon Valley.
And it needs to be historical focused, too, or to the 1776 time period.
Exactly.
So it can't just be something in the county today necessarily.
Well, that's true, and so that's our debate as we edit this down, and it may be edited down. So please don't hold us to this list. This is our starting working list. Just spitballing of the things that we want to highlight, and maybe there's something we didn't include. So, you know, it will be a give and take, and we'd like it to be no more than, what do you think, Tom, three or four minutes? I don't, I think we'll lose people if it's too long. So that would be my mission this summer, to start working on that, so we have it to help promote and get people excited about.
And we could always cut it down into, into pieces and then be able to share it on social media in, in shorter. But also, this, this footage, it also lends itself to its video that maybe is modified after 2020 is just for-
Absolutely.
For the-
Absolutely.
That, that was our thought.
They expanded upon it.
Right, and, and you know, actually, if you think of it historically, if we celebrated our 200th in 18, from 1813 to 2013, we weren't really here, and we weren't, we were still part of Lancaster and Dolphin Counties. So if we're going to take it that literally, we may not have as many things to highlight. So we might just take some liberties with that, I think, just we're going to have to maybe bend some of those rules, but we certainly want to highlight the best things about the Lebanon Valley.
And, and that fact about how the county wasn't in 1776 surprises me with how they broke up the counties. They should have, should have put Lebanon with the county they would have been a part of, right? So there might be something there, but they didn't do that because with Lancaster.
Right, but we are with Dolphins, so we came out of both of them. You're right. Yes.
Well, I don't know if this is, you know, stirring the pot and just throw it away, but just something I used, I have in the past set up some tours for the County Commissioners Association when I was President and Chair. And what I found was helpful for me was doing, almost like you have South Central, the different counties, do like regions within the county. So the northern part has this Swetara State Park and Ford Indian Time Gap, where the southern part might have the rail, well, you can do rail trail both. But if you understand what I'm saying, so, you know, maybe instead of one seven-minute video, you could do, if you had three sections, Myers Town and Palmyra Area, the southern and the northern, you could do four three-minute videos. I mean, it just food for thought. And, you know, it's nice to showcase the whole county on one, but there also might be advantages for the local people in those areas to highlight their areas for Schaeferstown and things like that.
Yeah, we'll take that under advisement. It's the greatest segment.
Do what you want, but when you're actually driving it, instead of ping ponging everywhere, it's nice to do a region.
That's a good point. Thank you.
If you look at packet, the handout number three, if you go to the third page, well, the first page says Bell Cross PA. If you go to the third page, this will tell you about the state's initiative to have these bells. These are fiberglass bells. They would like at least one in every county in the state of Pennsylvania. There is a cost to these bells. The bronze bell that they are promoting is $250,000.
Dream lawn.
I wonder how many of those.
Maybe one.
We're going to two, and what, two?
Oh, yeah.
Is there, yes, or if county by three or four.
We have three regions. Let's get-
Three for the price of one. So I'm just letting you know. We, the other bells that they're also designing for each county, and of course, each county, they, they want and there's on packet four that will give you some prices also. If you look at packet four, they'll give you the prices. So the fiberglass bells are about they're basically 250, but no, 25,000, I'm sorry. Now, that's wrong. No, that's wrong. I, I got that cleared up. The fiberglass bells, which they were really, really, they're suggesting, suggesting strongly that each county has these bells. There, you can either keep them inside or you can, they'll be able to be outside also. That's $25,000 for these fiberglass bells. They are three by three, three foot by three foot on a one-foot base.
They're basically a Liberty Bell replica.
Yes, yeah, both of these, the bronze bell-
Do they ring? Huh? Do they bell toll?
They, uh, fiberglass doesn't ring bells.
Is that where the artists started that?
We can fire it.
Yeah, I want to get, I want to get to you the best part. There is an artist. They have artists that are working on these bells. They do not have, and they're, what they're looking for is an artist from Lebanon County to maybe design a bell for, for our county. Again, this will be something that might be, is going to be brought up at the May 13th meeting at the expo that we're going to have. You know, and it's a suggestion I'm going to throw out to people that'll be attending. But they're really strongly suggesting that we raise money for those fiberglass bells, okay? The next thing that they're looking at is the Freemasons of Pennsylvania are sponsoring the Liberty Tree. And these are cuttings from the original Liberty Tree where the, they all met, the Sons of Liberty met. And they suggest maybe one or two of these trees to be planted. And they're suggesting Cornwall Iron Furnace for us because it has to be something to do with revolutionary work. It has to be a piece of property that is connected to the revolutionary work. I know that Light's Fort also is prior to 1776.
They also have a car.
And they're $2,000.
Expensive trees.
They're not planted for you.
They're going, they're going to, they will plant it. They don't have to come out yourself.
What kind and how, how big?
They, the way they look at it, the way I see it, the pictures that were shown to me at the Region Three meeting, they look like they're six or some foot.
Okay.
So they're, they're not tiny.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're, they're about, I would say, between five and seven foot.
Okay.
So, you know, that's yeah, they're not little, tiny little sections.
And, and I think they're, they're suggesting that you get a sponsor for that tree.
Yeah, and we're going to be working for sponsors for these, these two projects. I'm not looking at the bronze bell at all because I think that's just out of line.
Unless the Commissioners think differently. Get a couple.
I don't think the taxpayers would stand it.
Yeah, I know, right.
$250,000.
Very.
Yeah, so anyway. So that's as far as that's concerned, as far as the brass bells. And is there any questions about different things on that?
And when they talked about an artist designing the bell again, correct me if I'm wrong, it's that, it's basically that front part that I believe it's a
Yes.
Leviticus Bible verse on the front of the Liberty Bell?
It is.
That you would design something that would be related to your county.
Yeah.
To replace that part, so it would be like a-
But it has to be approved by the state.
Yeah.
Must be approved by the state.
Pre what?
Approved by the state.
Approved by the state.
Artists.
The artist and, and the rendition of the bell.
So I'm assuming it has to be something related to 1776 versus just Lebanon.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so. Anyway, so again, I'm just going through this quickly. Then read this on your own if you have any questions. But anyway, so that is, I think, all in a nutshell, as far as that's concerned.
Wait, I'm just going back to the $250,000 one. Did they suggest what, you know, after the event is over, when you retire this bell, where, where, do they have a suggested use? Or where would it be displayed in your county?
It depends on us, you know, this building outside, you know.
That sounds like it would be a good suggestion if we ever came up with that kind of honey.
So that's-
So it can be outside.
Oh, yeah, both of them could be outside, right. Yeah.
And, and did they, I don't remember, did we talk, did they say what the timing was, like if you ordered one, like when you would get it? Because it'd be something you could move around the county, you know, leading up to that, you know, different locations could get it.
They didn't say, they didn't say.
Because how are they going to make these bells?
Tom, I think they're just getting their act together as far as how bells are concerned. You know, I'll learn more as time goes by as far as that. Because I did contact this gentleman, Brian Langen, at the America Two Fifty because, you know, they weren't very clear about pricing on this. You know, so I really needed some, something to let me know what it's going to cost. And as you see on that, that, the next page there does tell you about the price.
So.
So all of the things, if, if the third page, fourth page of the bell packet is an indication, are all things, all purchases flowing through this 501(c)(3) of the Philadelphia Visitor Center Corporation? Or is that just for the bells? Maybe that's just for the bells.
It's just for the bells.
So the, the tree is purchased somewhere else?
The, the Freemasons of Pennsylvania are purchasing the trees. And they're going to be planting them, and then with the bells, there's going to be a special unveiling, you know, pictures taken, and, and so.
Yeah, I'm just curious of where, I mean, if there's a central point of, you know, requisitioning these things and ordering these things, and it's all being done by an America Two Fifty central office or?
No.
Kind of dealing with all these-
Well, dealing, I'm dealing with the people that are working at America Two Fifty through, for all of this.
Oh, the national?
No, the state.
Oh, the state.
The state. Now, anyway, let's see. When we're going to go ahead, and of course, packet five is the application for the Liberty Tree project. And I just copied this word for everybody so that they have an idea about what that is. Okay, so the big E one is coming up here now. Packet number six is the, and to be honest with you, I already registered for this because I wanted to make sure that I got on there and got a hotel room right away because this is a nationwide convention. This is includes all the states in the United States coming to Philadelphia. Philadelphia is going to be ground zero for this. I they are not very clear. And I'm trying to get the information on the registration and trying to get some ideas because in order for Jen to go along and Jan to go along, they're asking, I get one complimentary ticket. I'm thinking that that complimentary ticket is for the first, that the first night. Oh, where's these? The welcome reception. That's what I'm getting. I haven't had a chance, to be honest with you, to really go back and check on this. But in order for the other two to come along, because I feel it's very important for them to to come so that we can really go to these breakout sessions that they have and learn basically what other states are doing and so forth. Just to, to just get an idea of what everybody else is doing and, and more information. That's, this, this is going to be in September. They're, they're, of course, we're, we talked about it, we're only going for two nights, the most important nights. And that is, you know, Friday, Saturday, and we have one event to go to on Sunday morning. I have no idea what the extra purchasing of these tickets are. And if they will allow the other two, now, Tom can't come, but for Jan and Jen to come along, I, I, I'm not sure about that yet because they aren't very clear about it. So I had, I went right away and registered for this thing because I think it's very important for Lebanon County to be there. When I talk about the other counties, people, they're, they're going.
Yeah, I think it's good if three can go. I mean, you could, you know,
We could spread ourselves.
Yes, absolutely. Cover a lot of ground and-
Cover a lot of ground. There's a lot of ground to cover on this thing. They're going to keep us busy. There is not going to be time for anything. So Saturday, I think, is going to be the big day. I just want your approval. It's going to be, it will cost us some money to go to this.
Has your board discussed a, a commitment to this at all from your?
We have talked about it.
From Visit Lebanon Valley Board?
Yeah.
We have not.
Okay.
As far as a financial commitment.
Yes.
No? We have a board meeting coming up. You could certainly put it on the agenda.
It's a big event and it's, you know, can't see a better fit. You know, your budget, I don't think, would be able to handle a commitment.
So I feel that it is important for our county to do this 100%. I believe, I agree with you. I also feel like every other county is doing the same thing. So it's not like we're drawing new people here or drawing overnights here because they have their own celebrations going in. I see the main focus here being local and history as the two main thrusts of that. Not unlike the 200th celebration.
We, we, it's incumbent upon us, I know, on a proposal, but, you know, God bless Josie for taking the time to already attend one of these events at her own expense that should be universal. Identify a mechanism that maybe she can, you know, talk to Jamie to, as things arise, to find a mechanism to reimburse her for those expenses. And then, again, I know this is one of the things, we, we don't have a clear outline of what we intend to do, all the events and everything else. And hopefully, might be able to do some fundraising and get sponsorships for certain things that are operating so far without a budget. But I think this group needs to know, are, are we going to get financial support from the county if, if needed? And again, we don't have a blank check to give them, but I think we have to tell them the mechanism to discuss that, to identify a budget at some point in time and identify what we're willing to do or what, what we can and can't do.
We're not asking, I think I mentioned this before at our last meeting, I'm not asking for $50,000. I'm asking for expenses between Visit Lebanon Valley and my printer at home. This is what I did. This is expensive. I've already gone through two ink carts, just trying to get all this stuff together.
Well, this is just the beginning.
This is just the beginning, and this is what I'm trying to impress on both all three of you, that it's going to cost money. This is not something, I am not willing to fund this all on.
Josie, we don't want you to spend a penny on it. You weren't, you weren't asked to do this because we thought you'd carry this yourself. No, we, you will be, I, I, that's why I'm asking, what's the commitment from the DMO? I mean, it's like-
Well, the DMO has agreed to do and helped finance some of it. But I also feel that this is not all of the Visit Lebanon Valley. I think this is a county project, and these are things that I need to have clarified as far as, we have a meeting coming the 13th. I need to do some printing of handouts so that these people can get together. And the main reason we're having this meeting on the 13th is to basically formally somehow form different committees so that we can start organizing ourselves and moving on and trying to get our act together for 2026.
She, have you considered either asking, providing your documents to Jen for printing or to the county?
We did, we've been, we've been printing.
Oh, I thought you said you were paying for them.
No, 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 no. I said between her printer and my printer, we've already gone through a few ink cartridges, trying to get different handouts printed. And that costs money. That, that costs money. When you're thinking about a hundred and some dollars per cartridge, that's expensive, and my, my printer can't handle it, and neither can hers. We don't have a big stand-up printer to print. Is what I'm saying.
But this is just the beginning of the building blocks that we're going to be facing.
Use one example.
Yeah.
We need to have a mechanism to, to address those.
Yeah, right.
Well, and then also, what is, how do we, we talked about this briefly. If we just start to get sponsorships or there's money coming in, where does that money go? Is there, is there?
That's why I brought Julie Chaney in here because she-
Does that go to the county and then it sits there somewhere, or what, what's the right thing to do?
Tom, Julie handled this. This is Julie back here.
For the 200.
For the 200. I brought, I asked her to come to help us and guide us as to what they did in the 200.
And if, and if that's the best way to do it, right?
Is it me? Right, okay. So during, during the 200, the committee that worked on that applied for a Hotel Tax Grant of $10,000. It was Don Rose through the Historical Society asked for the hotel grant. $10,000 was committed. And then I was put in charge of funneling, funneling the funds. Now, we didn't actually have the sponsors that we had, like sponsored certain things, like the bag, the bags for the handout at the, at the event or so we actually didn't have necessarily, we just had an expense item. We didn't necessarily have an income line item, but it wouldn't, the line item would have been through the Hotel Tax funds that you have. That, that's how it was handled for the 200. So there was an application made. You guys, the Commissioners at that time granted that amount of $10,000, and then we used it for expenses, you know, during the 200.
So when the, I, I simply don't recall this, but when we had that, there was a sort of gala at the expo, they sort of society paid bills for that? Is that how that went?
Well, I mean-
It did not. It went through the county.
Well, I mean, it was on a, it was on a reimbursement.
Talking about literally invoices and the-
Yes.
Things like-
No, no, I did, I did all of them.
It did not go in, yeah.
And it came through.
Don was, Don was on the board of the Lebanon County Historical Society and basically chaired that committee.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, yeah.
But it, it came out of the Hotel Tax Fund, and yeah, you just, you'd be in charge of handling, paying the bills.
Okay, so should we apply for grant in a similar way?
Well, I think there are a couple of options that I'd like to discuss with these folks to, you know, part of it would be hotel tax money, and I'm not sure yet how that would be best, you know, used.
Right, and what would that amount? Be, you know, I don't know.
Honestly, Josie went to the meeting and had no business cards whatsoever and kind of felt not kind and did felt very foolish, not even.
not kind of, did felt very foolish, not even, I mean, so it's just, that's a small thing to have business cards. But then also, we're looking to get the logo on maybe apparel of T-shirts and, and caps and magnets, and it's kind of like when you do that, who's in charge of ordering that? Where does it get chips to? Who pays for that? Where are the items sold? So it just, there's so many unknown questions that are going through all of our minds right now. And it all kind of come back to the expenses and, and handling all invoices and being in charge of paying different things that would be helpful for the, uh, the county for the two twenty, for twenty twenty-six.
Get on that pronto.
Yeah, I mean, they have a logo, and it's probably will be in the America Two Fifty Lebanon, underneath it is what the logo will be. And then a matter of, you know, shirts and hats, or, I'm just in general, apparel and just, uh, different things that would, you know.
But I would, I would really like your board to discuss what.
I was just gonna say, yeah.
You have.
We could match.
You have cash on hand that, you know, that's.
Well, we did discuss some of it.
We did, but we didn't talk funding.
No.
I didn't know that it was our responsibility to fund the project. We would be happy to put some money towards it a hundred percent. And I will talk to the board and see what everybody's comfortable with. Um, and maybe we could match, you know, the both of us together could match and, and have a fund, but does that go through? Like Tom had mentioned, does that go through the county? Does it go through the treasurer's office?
Some, it could be dependent on what, you know, there's a budget and it's, it's split.
Right.
Whoever, whoever picks up that particular component.
We were trying to avoid setting up a Two Fifty at Lebanon nonprofit, like, that would be.
Yeah.
We discussed, because we weren't sure.
So I think, I think if there's a budget established, then you just decide, you know, who's paying for which component of it, and you know, if the county has a check for, for one thing, you know, the other comes out and we'll be, or however it's set up, but yeah, I don't see a reason to set up a whole.
Okay, good.
A whole mechanism just for paying those bills. Did, did you get a sense from any counties at the central meeting of what size budget any of them were talking about? He said some of them have been doing this for years, so they must have.
The gentleman from Duncan County was all that's.
Okay.
Uh, and he's the one that said he's been working on this since twenty twenty. What has he been working on? I don't know, because that's something he didn't share to the commit, to the people that were there.
He might be in charge of sponsors, paying him.
But would you look at the bell project and the tree project? Gives you a starting number.
Yeah.
You know.
You know, video budget?
No, and I was willing to pay for that. I would never have put that in, because that would have been our contribution on the tourism net.
Well, it should all be quantified, so.
But it can be quantified, absolutely, yeah, good point.
Well, some of the things we had talked about too, like I said, once we have this logo, I'll get the business cards set up, we'll get some printed, do whatever. How, how do I handle that? Do I just, like, in kind donate it? Uh, and even splitting the social media stuff, once we get set up, once we have a logo, we can build a social media page. Or multiple social media pages, um, just for the Two Fifty at Lebanon, and divide and conquer that.
If you go on the P A baseball page for the Two Fifty, America Two Fifty, it was very telling when I looked at this. You could see, you know, they're all holding little posters for their counties, and I'm like, oh, man, are we behind the times. So, you know, I'm mad at myself for not, you know, really thinking of these things in advance, but boy, every day, the day, you know, you're busy and you've got, keep your head down, and then you look up and it's twenty twenty-six.
And they have a mascot that'll probably visit.
Yeah, the Keystone character.
That, the Keystone character, uh, they, we have to register to get in here.
Right.
And they also have, they're working on getting a mobile unit, um, but again, it's gotta be requested online that the mobile unit would be coming to the county and, and maybe visiting the different municipalities and so forth. But again, this is something that we have to register to get. The statewide calendar is going to be, will, will, uh, their startup is July fourth, this July fourth for their events. They're also working with the Veterans Affairs also, uh, on getting flags on vet graves, veterans' graves. And there's also, again, this is in the works. They're also working on educational programs and packets that can be downloaded and sent to the different school districts. Um, they're basically geared for the, the third and fourth graders. And there's also going to be a podcast, and this is something I was gonna talk at the May thirteenth meeting also.
Josie, I don't know if they shared their thought process. But we have a director of Veterans Affairs, and he handles all the flags and the little medallions and things that go in the cemeteries. So he has a complete list of all our Revolutionary War burials and things like that, that you could obtain from him. And, uh, Soldier's Block, I understand, might have a, a square. So, um, I don't know, if you go to the V A, they would have to go through us to get, I don't understand the thought process there, maybe I'm not supposed to, but uh, I just point that out, so if you're looking for things, you might want to stop with Scott Core. Or Doug Edder, and, and I believe he's, he's invited to the meeting.
He's invited.
Thirteen, we've added, we've added him. That's where adding more people that are showing interest, or that we think, oh, boy, we never thought of this.
Do some special with, with Revolutionary Gravesites would be an interesting.
Well, this.
Oh, yeah.
When I'm saying, this is something that they're, they're talking about. Yeah, so.
Well, and also, on the, the next meeting on the thirteenth, um, I was going to bring up different committees that I think we should start segmenting in. So if you have an interest in, you know, um, actually, and these are taken from the platform that the P A Two Fifty recommended, but, um, I added an artistic platform based on Carrie's uh, proposal for that, to see if we get the grant for that project. Um, an environmental platform, that would be state parks and trails and outdoor recreation. A community platform, which could include the, um, townships and boroughs, and whoever else would like to be involved in that. Um, maybe they could also work on merchandise at that point. Um, an education platform, um, that involves the Keystone Kid Initiative. And as Josie mentioned, it's pre-K through fourth grade, they have this little character, they have coloring books, they have all these things. So if we could get a teacher or someone in that, in that grade area in, interested, or a superintendent interested in saying, I want to get our kids excited about this. A history preservation platform for sure, and a military platform. I think those are the one, those are the keystones of the six platforms, but then I'd like to add two more committees. One for social meeting and marketing, and it may just be, you know, uh, three people that coordinate all of that. And a sponsorship committee, which will be a huge one, because we've already got probably thirty thousand dollars of sponsorships. If we get a three or two and a, and a bell, boom, there we are, and pay an artist for their time, that's thirty thousand. So we've already got, got some ground to cover. So that, that was just one thing I was gonna bring up at the meeting, and, and then they could meet individually instead of all of us being, you know, a big room filled with people with lots of ideas, maybe we start targeting the different platforms.
Channelling them to the right, right, right platform.
And it also appeared, I started investigating this a little bit, but there, there might be some money available that you can apply for, for grants specifically related to this. I guess at the federal level, on a state level, but I did, it was pretty confusing, but you know, there might be some money set aside, I don't know.
I was springboard on that a little bit, so if there is money like that, typically they ask for a governmental organization to be the applicant. So as you talk about subcommittees and so on, um, at this point, the only structure we really have is that the commissioners adopted a resolution that named you as the chair, Josie, so we ought to have, uh, at least an appointed commission. It doesn't have to be absolutely, everybody comes to your meetings. You know, I'm getting a little bit here, you know, into the logistics or the administration of things, but if, if we're, if we're going to at some point apply if D C E D makes money available, or if somebody through state, federal makes grants, well, they're probably gonna want the commissioners to sign as the applicant, so we ought to have a, uh, some sort of structure that's the commission. So if you have a core group you wanna, wanna propose.
I, I didn't mention a few names to you, yeah.
Yeah, but if you wanna make a list and say, this is the commission, you know, and then from that you get the committees and that, they don't all have to be listed, but at some point, we may be asked to, uh, list that commission, or just show, show some sort of a structure when applying for, but.
And we just present that commission to you, you guys would adopt it.
I maybe, um, missed it, but what time on May thirteenth? I got the expo, I just missed the time.
Thank you. I'll send a reminder out.
Very good, thank you.
Is there any other questions we're going to?
And I will put it on our agenda for our board meeting to discuss. And that meeting is the fourteenth, our next, it's the, the fourteenth.
Work from our end to.
Okay.
Do the same thing.
Just like to again, thank Josie for accepting this thing. So far, all J's and any for T.
It was, it was, it was an issue at the first meeting. They asked me to change my name, I said I wouldn't do it.
And his middle, he doesn't start with a J either, so he blew that one out, he knows.
What, what is your background, I'm sorry?
Um, package design, brand, brand development.
Okay, brand development.